We have all of our board members here. Heath Salat, Laura Bozzi, and John Martin. And I'm Eric Worth, Chair of the Board. Let's, let's deal first with, with 8 Campbell Avenue, which was on the agenda, but we're taking it off. We're not going to address it. And the reason is, this application concerned rebuilding the front porch, which had collapsed and needed to be almost entirely rebuilt. But, and the building inspector had referred the applicant to the ZBA. But, in fact, the, for this project, no zoning variance was needed. Section 134-19H talks about renovations to non-conforming buildings, which is what this is. It's a pre-existing non-conforming building. It has no front yard setback, so it does not conform to zoning in that sense. But it pre-existed the zoning code. And under this, this section of the code that I mentioned, an owner of a pre-existing non-conforming building is permitted to perform repairs as long as, as long as no, as long as the, the non-conformity is not increased and no new non-conformity is introduced. And that was the case with this application at 8 Campbell Avenue. The owner was going to rebuild the porch on the same footprint. And therefore, there would be no change in the degree or number of non-conformities. So he's entitled to proceed as far as zoning is concerned. So we will not have to address that application. The building inspector will reissue the referral. Anyone have questions about, about that? John Martin, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a question about that. Did we talk to John first about that at all by any chance?
Yes, I did discuss this with John first, and he's totally, he agrees and confirmed what I just said.
Okay, because I mean, at times in the past where we've rebuilt, we just felt like it was a safer thing just to grant the variances. But, you know, it's one, the other.
Yeah, this, this section of the code is very clear. The language is very clear. There's no, there's no, and also the nature of this application is quite clear. It's a, so there, it would be a, it would be, I think, an imposition on an applicant to drag them through an unnecessary process when, when they are in their, in their right to, to take this action on their property.
Through that code section?
Yes, yeah. Now, the next item is 212 Main Street. Now, the applicant is here, Tanya Drennan and her architect Roger Hoffman. Tanya, I'm sorry, I didn't talk to you sooner about the mailing receipts. Did you see my email message about? You're muted. Your, your camera's on mute, it looks like.
Sorry, I didn't see your email, but I do have four out of five of the receipts.
Okay, well, actually, all we, we don't need the return receipts. We just need your copy of the postal, what the post office gave you to show that you mailed them.
Okay, I gave those to Jeff the day that I took them to the post office.
Okay. He did not send me, he's got them, but he did not send me a copy of them.
Well, I'll, why don't I take a picture of what I have so that at least you have it for the record for the meeting?
Okay.
It has the tracking IDs.
Yeah.
Eric, maybe if we make a decision tonight, we make a contingent on confirming what Jeff has, that, you know, Jeff's receipt of materials.
Yeah, yes, I suppose we could do that. I mean, Jeff has, Jeff has reviewed them and he has them in his possession. So, I mean, he's told me he has them, so I
Oh, okay.
That is probably, and he's an agent of the village and he's acting on our behalf. So I think that is inadequate. And then, of course, we can confirm them and make, make any action contingent. But if, Tanya, if you are able to send over, email over a photograph or anything you can produce. She's got four out of five, so.
Right.
While she's working on that, let's deal with the SEACRA determination for, for an application hearing, the ZBA has to decide the SEACRA type and all area variances affecting one family residences are by default type two, under SEACRA, which does not require further environmental review. So I move that the board declare this a type two action. Does anyone second the motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All right. Are you, so that's, that's unanimous. And, Tanya, the second thing that we'll need from you is the affidavit about the sign.
Right.
Do you have that to show us?
I had the impression I was supposed to give that to Jeff the day after, but I, I do have, let me just take it out of my file.
If worse comes to worse, you could just sign another copy.
I'm gonna send it over right now.
Okay. Meanwhile, let me ask the board members, did you see the additional documents that Jeff posted about this application?
Yeah.
You know, they were helpful to give a sense of the, the proposed building. Meanwhile, Tanya, at this point, I would typically ask you or your architect to briefly introduce the project to us and to any members of the public. It looks, it looks like nobody, no members of the public are here, though. Is, will you be doing that, or will, will Mr. Hoffman?
I can handle that, Eric.
All right. Well, would you like to go ahead and, and
Sure.
introduce it to us?
All board members, my name is Roger Hoffman, Architect. I'm representing Tanya Drennan, 212 Main Street. I'm looking at the agenda. It does indicate the second story addition to an accessory building. But besides that, we also have a new deck and stairs on the west elevation. That was approved by the Historical Review Board pending ZBA approval. I do have that reference number to refer which is 2020-12-005. So beside the garage, the second story addition, we also have this deck and stairs that just need ZBA approval.
Ah, okay, well, I didn't know that. I mean, I saw that in the, in the application. I saw the other referral.
Yeah.
But we haven't, we didn't receive any pictorial materials regarding the deck addition.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you could share the screen, you could actually see it on the drawing ST1. Dot three.
ST1, I see ST1.
Can you share the screen or?
Well, we should all should have a copy. This was in the, the original PDF.
Okay.
And it's, it's page 16 of the PDF.
It's clearly hatched on the west side of the building.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and I have all the dimensions as shown there, and the only item that a ZBA approval is, is that they exceeding 30% on the lot coverage. That is the only thing that's mentioned on the referral.
Oh, okay. Well, this is new to us.
Okay.
So let's take a minute to make sure we understand it here.
It is basically a small deck with a winder stair coming down to grade. There's an existing door on the second floor. And this is gonna basically have the access to that door to the deck. And it does meet all the setback requirements. It's just a matter of, I guess, a lot coverage, which I believe is very close.
Okay, so is this, is there a roof on this deck?
No, there's not. It's just a deck with back, matching the deck on the opposite side of the building. Like I had mentioned, on the 27th, it did receive Historical Review Board approval, again pending ZBA approval.
Now,
Can I ask, this isn't part of the, the conformance worksheet, though, or is it? Is this, is this in that worksheet?
No. Yeah, the conformance worksheet is just basically the garage.
So where is the calculation of coverage now that includes the deck? What is the?
I guess, basically, we have to, we owe you a conformance worksheet indicating the deck and the stair.
Yeah, yeah, we really need a more formal presentation. This, the application form only mentions the garage.
We could maybe table this and just focus on the garage tonight, then.
Yeah, okay, we can certainly keep the hearing open, and problem is the notice that went out mentions only the, only the garage. And that's the only thing that the neighbors have been notified about. So in fact, I don't think we, I think we'll have to do a second hearing on the deck.
Okay.
So we can act on the garage and
Okay.
They really need to be considered separately anyway. So why don't you talk about the garage?
Okay, well, we have an existing garage, accessory building. And there are several ZBA issues, I guess, that have been brought up. First being the lot coverage. Second being in excess of one and a half stories. And the building itself being 10, less than 10 feet from the property lot line. And then also the 30% rear yard coverage. So those are the issues. Assuming you have all the drawings, you should have a floor plan. You should have elevations of the building, what it looks like from Orchard. Was superimposed on that picture. ST1 also indicates all the setbacks that are there for that garage. So it's basically a second story addition to the garage. Can be used for storage, and have a stair going up to it within the garage. Remain under 20 feet. That's pretty much it. That does have the conformance worksheet completed.
Yes. I'm looking at the elevation, front and side, and it looks like the second story would slightly increase the non-conformities on setbacks. The second story extends out a little farther on the sides and in the back than the existing roof. So you'll have a little less setback.
Yeah, the, the footprint on the second floor is really only extending out 12 inches on the sides. We're not, you know, we're not extending it anymore in the back of the building, nor the front. Just really both left and right side, as you look at the garage, is that all running?
Yeah. Another one of the existing non-conformances is proximity to the house. Under the code, accessory building should be no closer than 10 feet. And that's not marked on the, on the maps, any of the, any of the plans, but it looks like less than 10 feet. So that number will be reduced by the expanded width of the, of the second floor here.
That's all accurate, Eric, correct?
Yeah. I'm struck by the photograph, very useful photograph of the, from Orchard Street, looking straight on at the garage that has a kind of a line drawing showing the outline of the proposed second.
I want to superimpose it over, overlay over the existing garage.
Yeah, that's very helpful to get a sense of the, the new bulk that would be created. I have to admit that it's quite a substantial new presence there. It does block quite a bit of view. Anyone passing on Orchard Street is going to lose quite a bit of, it's gonna be like a new sense of a, of a wall there, a blockage. However, we did not receive any objections from neighbors or any comments of any kind, actually.
Eric, were these drawings in the, in the village, just in case people stopped by to look?
They were sent to Jeff a while back. I don't know, he just posted them today. I don't know. Tanya, did, did you give them in print form to Jeff, or just by email, electronic?
Well, they've been on the, there, if you follow the link from the website, it's been there since I originally got the, the meeting appointment.
Well, this
So if you go to
Current applications.
Exactly, current applications.
These three new drawings, though, the three new documents were not posted as of our, our workshop, and I think Jeff just posted them today, or maybe yesterday on, at the current applications page. So which means, I guess, the public could not have seen them until then. Even if they went to Jeff's office, if he only had them in electronic form.
What are those drawings?
Yeah, the three, there were three documents that I guess, Tanya provided originally, but we just, we never received them. And it was at the workshop two weeks ago, we had a discussion about the missing documents. And so it's the elevation is one of them, and then this photograph, we just mentioned with the outline of the addition is number two, and the third one is the sketch about calculating coverage, lot coverage, rear yard coverage. So those three, I guess, were not available to the public until maybe yesterday.
I mean, we only received them ourselves, Eric, as you mentioned. So there, there's a little concern about notice, that's all, as you, as you're inferring, perhaps.
Well, yeah, I do feel like
Notice of the design, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, exactly. I, it sounds like it would be prudent for us to leave the hearing open until the next meeting. We can discuss it and so on, and, and then leave the hearing open to give and since we'll be, we'll be discussing the deck at the next meeting as well, then we can resolve both at that, at that time.
May I ask a question about the deck?
Sure.
Um, I had the impression that it wasn't even a matter for ZBA to address. I thought it was just historical review because it's within the setbacks, and I believe that the deck itself doesn't exceed the coverage, so
Oh.
I, does that mean that both? I mean, if you take one separate from the other, it seems like it's double dipping if I'm having to, if one is within the coverage and then the other exceeds.
Right.
Are you going to be analyzing both of them for coverage?
Well, there's that one clause in the code, which is 138-8, letter D as in dog, says that all buildings together should not cover more than 30% of the lot. And apparently, you're at 37 now. Now, one thing I'm foggy on, given my relative inexperience, is an uncovered deck counted toward coverage, building coverage?
I, yeah, Eric, if I can just tell you, I, I believe as long as it's not covered, we would not include that as part of a structure in the, in, in, in the, in the area of, you know, calculations. So that, that's my understanding, but we could double check with John first, that's.
I thought I remembered from past discussions that it's, a roof is required for a structure to count as, to count toward the building coverage.
That, that, that's, I believe that's absolutely accurate. And like I said, we could just double check with John first, but if you're looking for somebody who's looked at these things before, the only time we dealt with decks is when the decks were in setback areas.
Right.
So
Which it's not.
Yes.
And the entire footprint of that deck with the stairs, 124 square feet, if you want, just wanna make a note of that.
Okay, so, Tanya, to answer your question, we would not need to talk about the deck at all. We would not have, have any say if, if it does not, if there's nothing, if it does not require a variance. So that's what we have to determine is whether it requires a variance. And if it's true that it doesn't count toward the coverage, then, then we have no say on, on that point.
Um, the other question I have about that is, you know, I have two backyards or two side yards, depending on how you look at it. So um, the only side slash backyard that has a small area with a large percentage of coverage is where the two driveways are, where the garage is. I'm, I mean, I do have a small backyard, but I believe that even with the deck and the garage, the backyard where the deck is would be within, I, I'm looking for my chart, I think it was like 19% for the garage, so the deck is not gonna add that much more. I think it would still be within 30% in the, the part of the yard where the deck is. It's the garage section. If you have the highlighted close-up of the survey that has the calculations on it, it's the backyard from Main Street. Yeah, it's, or the side yard, if you're on Orchard. That's the, the yard that has, you know, more mass per square footage because it's just two, one and a half driveways and a garage, but the other lot has a pretty far distance from the property line on Main Street to the garage. And even though the garage falls within that, the deck doesn't extend into the, the other backyard. It's in the, the larger backyard or side yard, depending on which way you're looking.
Yeah. You need to choose one, one of them to be your, your, to count as your rear yard. From your drawings, it looks like you're going with the north side as the rear yard. And then the west side is the side yard. So that's fine. And keep in mind, there are two questions of coverage here, or two, two sort of rules involved. One of them is the total lot coverage, all buildings together can't take up more than 30% of the entire lot. And then the other one is percentage of the accessory building in the rear or side yard. So that's the second coverage question. And you're fine on the, on the one of the accessory building in the side or rear yard, I think. That's what, that's covered in your conformance worksheet. And you, you show that it's, you're at 19% and 30% is permitted. So the, the only other, the other coverage question then is all buildings together covering the entire lot. And I have a, my notes here are 37%. Where did I get that from?
It should be 30%, all, all enclosed structures and buildings, accessory buildings on a single lot are not to exceed 30% of the total area of the property.
Exactly, but I, I have a note that of, that in this property, it's 30, it's currently 30, 37%.
It's in the conformance sheet. And, but it doesn't, there's no difference between existing and the proposed. And
Oh, right.
I think, given the wider second floor, there should be, right, that counts. So that, so it should be a little bit bigger for the proposed. Should be a little bit bigger than 37%.
Yeah, the request has to be made that way. You're correct, Laura. So you figure?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Laura.
No, just to ask if, Roger, do you know how many more square feet of coverage there is? It goes from 34, 33, and then it would go up.
Yeah, again, the, the overhang is one foot by the, you know, the front to back space of the building. So
Is that one foot on both sides, Roger?
Yes, it is, both sides.
Okay, so would it be Okay, so would it be the length of the garage?
By times one.
Hang by a foot on each side, you said, Roger?
Yeah, it's a foot on both sides, so, yeah.
Time to correct. And, and, and Eric, before we get off of this, the other thing we mentioned, so we don't miss it again. Is the, 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 the space between the accessory building and, and the main structure.
Right, we don't, we don't know what that is now. And that's one of the non-conformities.
But that wasn't on the conformance sheet, was it?
No, but we can review this. The building inspector does everything they can to put things down. And if we notice anything further that needs to be addressed, we, we have to do that because it's all part of the application.
Yeah, scale wise, I mean, it's certainly under ten feet. Just by looking at this, he won't.
Yeah, I just. Just following up on the question of whether an uncovered deck with no roof counts toward coverage. And our, the zoning code defines a building as any structure having a roof. A, a supported roof intended for shelter. So a roof is inherent to the definition of building. And our, the code for R1 says that building percentage of lot coverage is thirty percent. So, yes, a, a deck with no roof does not count toward the. Lot coverage, so. Do the other board members agree with me that? The deck is not. Is not. Part of our review here, it's not. It's not relevant to our consideration and we have no, nothing to say about it. And other, there are no variances involved in the deck.
I believe there are none, but I wouldn't, I, I would just still throw, pass it by John first, I, I agree with what you just said there. What if somebody says, oh, we're going to sit underneath the porch? I mean, I, it gets silly, I know, but I, you know. It's the nature of the structure really that you look at, in, in this case, it's a deck. But again, for safety purposes, why don't we just cross things by John first, that's all, that's my feeling.
But I agree with the. The thought, absolutely.
Well, does anyone have any other questions about the, the garage?
Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I was just going to simply ask if the applicant considered, you know, drafting. An alternative proposal for. What we would, you know, ordinarily allow is a half story above the garage. And in this case, the garage roof is relatively flat, so by even adding a half story, you're going to be adding substantial space. And for the fact that the. The garage is so close to the. What do you call it, the setback lines and particularly the western boundary. You know, it, it brings, you know, added concern about the height. Of a structure that's an accessory building. You know, going up, it, it has its impacts, visual impacts. So, you know, I think if you were to put a half story on with. You, you would be getting a lot more space than you currently have, there's no doubt. And I totally understand using storage, I pay three hundred thirty three dollars a month because I don't have any attic. For storage, and there's a lot of people in Cold Spring who have storage issues. And quite frankly, we've never really, it, it, I've been ten years on the board. Had garages expanded to a second level. Unless they were actually grandfathered and constructed previously, you know, prior to the code that way. So. It's just food for thought, you know, we're going to look at all the criteria and everything. But tha- that's my experience having been on the board.
Yeah, and I, I would add to that, the, the design is a maximalist design. It really. Is. It, it need, it didn't need to be so big, it, so it, it's. Creates quite a, it adds quite a barrier there to the sightlines and. So the board will just have to. Carefully consider that, and we want to make sure that the neighbors are aware of the scope of it.
I mean, we should always refer, I mean, again, the section that we're referring to with regards to the accessory buildings, as we all know, is one thirty four dash seventeen. And it says, you know, such building or garage shall not exceed one and a half stories. And basically, the board has, you know, sort of, it has been abiding by that. You know, stricture. You know, even when it comes to people adding on to their homes, going, building up. We've allowed half stories, you know, if there's certain portions of the house that have a different wing to it. So that they don't go up more than two and a half stories, some people have looked to go up three stories. And the only exception we did with regards to that was. Basically, a, pretty much a grandfathered building, one of the buildings from back in eighteen twenties. Near the new. The new housing, that's. But these were, these were the buildings that were actually occupied for the homes that were occupied by the, the owners of the foundry. And it only in that regard, only in that case did we look beyond the two and a half story. You know, as you go up, you can't have more than a half story as the third story. And that building was the only exception that was allowed to it because of its historic nature. Now, this is just background, if that helps.
You considering this second story a half story or a full story?
It, it's a, a full story in the proposal, and I think John is saying. It, it just throwing out the. As alternative, that, that adding a half story would provide meaningful space.
And how is it determined to be a full story?
Well, if, go ahead, it, it's measured by what the, the footprint is below it.
This building has a four foot high plate height. Okay, and by the time you do the rafters on top of it, with the proposed pitch. The only space with seven feet is, is a small section of maybe seven feet by six feet. So that is basically your area. That is your full story, which is la- a lot less than what is, you know, below it. So I'm, I'm looking at this as a half story. If you can just re, you know, relook at, you know, reevaluate that, but this is definitely a half story.
That's a good point, if it's a half story, that changes everything. Because then you would be entitled to make the addition without a variance. At least as far as, as that particular clause in the code. I wonder how the code defines a story.
Sorry, is it right in front of me here? The vertical distance from the top surface of the floor to the top surface of the floor next above. The height of the topmost story is the distance from the top surface of the floor to the top surface of the ceiling joints. A half story is defined as the uppermost story in which the potential floor area of no less than seven feet. Ceiling height is no more than fifty percent of the floor area of the story directly beneath it. So with a four foot plate height. You know, that, that, that area going in from the four foot to, to you get to that seven feet is really not, you know, not considered in that, in that calculation. That's almost, let's just call it unusable space. So by the time you're standing in the center of the building at the seven foot height. You know, it's only six feet by seven feet at that point. And that is certainly a lot less space than a flurry of your blow, which in my mind is certainly a half story. If I could share my screen, I actually did a little study of that, I don't know. Something I could do.
Yeah, if you could put the numbers together, that'd be great, if you just get the measurements of what the bottom floor is and.
Can I just share my screen and show one drawing, is that possible?
Yes, you can.
Let me. Share my screen. Can anybody see that?
Yes.
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 So here, here's the second floor. Okay, looking to the left, you only have a four foot high plate height. Going in, you're at three foot seven, by the time you reach that seven foot high elevation. Which again, according to the definition is, that's where you start, you have your. Your seven foot is no more than fifty percent of the flurry of the story directly beneath it, so that little red box. You, you know, is a lot less than what's happening below. It's certainly not exceeding fifty percent at seven feet.
But that's in the red box, correct?
Yeah, just. That little red box there.
So we used to have an architect on the board, what we'll do is we'll just run these numbers by the architect in the interim.
Okay. You want to just forward you this drawing, so we can take a look at it as well.
Is it possible for you to add the dimensions of the bottom floors? So that we know, you know, in order to calculate fifty percent, we need to know the area of the first floor.
Yeah, you have the floor plan, it's, um, it's the. A one dot, yeah, A one dot two, that has the footprint of the garage below and above.
Do you know what the dimension is, could you take a look?
See that? So the existing lower floor is fourteen three by seventeen two. On the other way, twenty twelve three by seventeen two. The drawing to the left is the first floor footprint.
And, and Roger, you said the height, I know it's indicated on one of the. You know, submissions you put, what, what's the height of the first floor?
The height of the first.
I, you have it written down on one of your things, I didn't know if you know offhand or I can find it.
Well, can you see this, this is the proposed like nineteen six. And we are going up from the existing ridge to the new ridge at seven feet, seven inches right there.
But I, I think what John's asking is in order to compare with the fifty percent of the second floor. You know, relative to the actual first floor height.
Well, you know what it is, it's in your new submission, which I have on another, it's the, the, the new drawing that was just submitted. That's where you've indicated the height of the lower floor, and I believe the top floor, but I've got to now open that up.
See the, the height there, but I don't know if it's in the same justification of what we read. Or what we just listened to with what is a story.
Okay, so it seems that. The addition qualifies as a half story. And that removes that. That variance question from consideration.
Have you done the calculation, Eric? I mean, I haven't necessarily, I have to look at this a little further.
All right.
Architect, so I just would, you just have to know. That it, you know, meets the criteria on the numbers.
Okay. Well, so John, we would like. You, you need the drawing that he showed us before, correct?
Well, I have, I have the drawing that has been submitted to us, and I'm looking at it, it says elevation of the first floor of the garage is eight feet. And then elevation at the roof line on the second level is thirteen feet. So, I don't know, personally, you know, this is why we always had an architect on the board.
Oh, you're, you're saying show it to the village architect?
Yeah, we could just do that, just pass the numbers by, just so that we know, I mean, unless.
Okay, apparent, apparently the building inspector thought. Felt that disqualified as a second story, but she may not have seen all the drawings.
Right, this could be a half story, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert in this area. But, you know, I would crunch, I, I'll personally crunch the numbers and then, you know, double check on everything.
Well, the, it seems to me the key to the definition depends on that previous drawing. The one showing the internal depth, uh, dimensions of the second of the addition. Not this one, the other one, the first one.
It seems like it would be super helpful to the board if we could receive all of the numbers in one drawing. I don't, I mean, I think for us to be kind of combining things and doing the math on our own. I think having it presented all together so that we're all on the same page would be helpful. Because this is an important piece of the application and we just want to get it right.
Yes. What do you mean by all the numbers on one drawing?
Well, so the, this, what's on the screen now from Roger Hoffman doesn't have any of the. Downstairs numbers, and so it sounds like they're on other documents, but they're not all in one place. And we're all kind of trying to search around and I'm not sure if I'm looking at the right numbers. So just having it all in one place to put this to rest, I don't think we need an architect, I think if all of the numbers are here. We can, you know, we'll, we'll know the answer.
Really, these two drawings that you're, you know, this, this and the other one, right? That one, and that one. Right, here's your, you know, you want to get your footprint of your lower storage, twelve feet, three inches times seventeen two. That's your existing lower floor footprint, and we're basically increasing it by this dimension. Seventeen two remains. Withwise, we get a little bit wider by two feet.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I feel like these two drawings are sufficient. In combination with what we already have. But what you are.
I, I guess I'm just a little. I just think that like, it'd be nice if the calculation were made for us, but if, if that's sufficient, then that's fine, I'm just a little. Well, so if, I mean, the, the requirement in the code is that it's less than fifty percent. So just being able to see it written out, that it's less than fifty percent would be really satisfying, but.
Okay. Roger, could you give us, could you go back to the one with the intern? Roger, could you give us, could you go back to the one with the internal height? Uh, so could you um, show us the map? Uh, that that convinces us that this is a half story. So, you know, what is the square footage of? Um, the seven foot portion versus the square footage of the less than seven foot. To show that it needs definition.
Sure. Can't do that right now, though.
And then we I we I would also like to see more precise numbers on 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 the. Uh, nonconformity of area dimensions, area requirements. That takes into account the the new, the second story that are the addition, the the change dimensions of the addition. Or or does does your, does your, um, the plan we received, I'm going back to it now. Um, site plan. So here, when you say um. Rear rear yard setback um, given is nine, nine point six feet. Does that? But see, that's that's um, this drawing shows the existing garage. It's labeled existing garage. So we need these numbers for the proposal, the proposed structure. Like what would the rear yard setback be? This the and also the distance to the primary structure. And then total lot coverage, um, what that would be under the. Um, under the proposal. So in other words, a a new version of the conformance table. With more precise numbers that reflect the. That reflect the proposal.
So for now, we're not going to include the balcony and the and the stair, right?
Um, I'm well, I'm gonna just double check with the village attorney, but it does seem. Tentatively, it does seem that that's not under the purview of the ZBA. There's no, we have no say in in the balcony.
Okay.
Uh, Roger, just out of curiosity, what do you get for the total square footage of the um? The uh, intended proposed second story. Well, we can, if you're saying it's a half story, we can term it a half story. What what do you have for that total square? You know, because I think I think what would be good is if we're gonna be keeping the hearing open and we go to towards next week, it would be really good to put together calculations on that. Uh, and just make it that we just look at it like, for instance. I have your width of the lower part of the garage at twelve point three. This is what I I was hearing, uh, seventeen point two on the length. Eight feet in the height. The ceiling on on the first floor, I come out with one thousand six hundred ninety-two. Uh. Uh, square feet.
One thousand.
Pardon me?
How how big was that again?
Uh, well, I was going twelve point three times seventeen point two times eight.
You're getting the volume? You're you're going for cubic feet?
Well, yeah, I'm not an architect, so I'm trying to.
For the footprint of the building, which does not include the eight feet. It's just the the twelve foot three by seventeen two, that is.
Fine, fine, all right.
So let's go fourteen point, so for fourteen, well, I'm doing the second floor right now, fourteen, three is really fourteen point two five. Times a seventeen point two, which is seventeen point one six. So the second floor is two hundred and forty-four. Point five, three feet. Square feet. That's the second story addition. Okay.
And you had that as square footage of two, uh, two hundred and forty-four point five, three?
Yes, for the second floor addition. That's measured the outside walls. I don't know.
Right.
Those are the inside walls for for this um conformity. It says the floor area. So floor area to me is inside walls. Right, I don't know if someone can confirm that. Is it, does it include the wall thickness? That's that's the number I gave you. Basically does include the wall thickness.
Yeah. So, uh, in the in your submission, Roger, can you just put down like how you're calculating all this, you know, for the for the half story and. And and you know, for the bottom story, how it's all figured out, just put it. Right alongside the drawings and what the measurements are like, you've already done virtually the whole thing. Just take those diagrams and throw. You know, put them together and put the numbers on them and then put the calculations.
Okay.
That that's what we basically need when we submit it as a final version so that nobody's really guessing.
Yeah, I can do that.
It's the footprint, um, an average of the new section. And the existing section. Because I I thought the footprint was actually the footprint that's on the ground.
Well, it's really just the footprint on the ground, even though you're extending it, but but because you're extending it outward. Uh, that would require additional variances. For instance, with the proximity. If it's less than ten feet from the main building, that that's one variance concern. Also, the variance on the north border, uh, part of the garage is already within that setback. On the north border, that would change by another foot. Uh, and let's see.
But like to Tonya's point, I mean, really, it's what's on the ground, right? I mean, um, and not overhangs, because the roof, any roof has an overhang. Typically, right? I mean.
Well, I don't know. What what is the, what is the typical overhang like, uh, length?
Well, it could, it varies, twelve inches, you know, it can go up to eighteen inches, but. Do you include the roof overhang in 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 the setbacks? I don't think so. I think it's just basically the.
Well, there may be, there may be, I I don't know if you really call it a roof overhang in this case. Uh, because it's not just the floor footprint, it's also a floor footprint of what's above it and then the roof is above that. So that roof is going to, we're not calculating the roof at this point because that roof is. You know, ha- half story further up now. And that extends even further out from where the floor is on that second level.
And the addition is eight feet up.
Excuse me?
And the and the addition itself, the second story is is eight feet up in here, so.
It it's it's for instance, if 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 somebody, you know, your neighbor builds, uh, you know. A structure on his backyard and, you know, puts a second level or half story above with the flooring. And hangs that a one foot over here and then there's a roof above that that hangs even further. I mean, it has impacts is what I'm getting at. And 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 we can clarify this the next time we we get together and. And certainly, Eric would more than likely, I mean, he he would let you know. Of anything that really comes up that's gonna have to be considered, then, you know, the next time the hearing is uh, continued.
Okay.
But I have, you see, we're not talking about a roof overhang at this point. I understand what you're saying about a roof overhang. But you have here a floor overhang on the second level and then a roof that overhangs that. And it has its impacts. I mean, it it's not like, oh, it's just the 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 floor itself. You know, the first floor footings.
Well, um. So where does the where does the code talk about, um, when you measure the distance from a building? What is it you measure from on the building?
Well, I would imagine since the upper part is part of the building. That that this proposed second floor, that's that's the part that really gets measured from.
Um, but not the roof overhang?
That that's a little bit more up in the air. There have been issues about that that.
I know that, um, when the when the code talks about yards, it refers to the building line, measuring from the building line.
That's right. So it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't miss mean the roof in this case. The building line, I think it's the structure. The face, uh, the face of the building.
Is it the 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 uh, the face that extends farthest forward? I mean, because a facade might have faces at various depths.
Exactly.
So building line is the face that extends the farthest forward perhaps?
Yes.
Where's that shown? How's that indicated?
I don't know, I'm just.
We're gonna, we're we're gonna, we're, we didn't know that this was gonna be on the uh, the tablet. I I. I just got your building plans within the last day or day and I noticed that overhang, but I didn't go searching through the code to look at it. Because. Uh, did did the, did the building inspector actually see these uh, building plans?
Yeah, I'm assuming they did because they wrote the referral, right? Referral from the building inspectors from Charlotte. So, you know, in case these items, so I'm assuming she will review them, came up with these four.
Right, right. What 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 we'll do is like, we we, well, we as a board just got them, so we would, we'll end up doing our homework and exploring it.
I see a definition for building area as which this sounds like it's, that's relevant. The total area taken on a horizontal plane at the main grade level. Of the principal building and all accessory buildings exclusive of uncovered porches, terraces and steps. Um, so maybe the question is what's main grade level?
I'm thinking at grade.
That's that's very interesting. So that definitely means, um. In the question of lot coverage, we do not consider the dimensions of the half story, the new addition.
Yeah, I I don't want to just jump at that. I I I I, there may be something more than just that. Uh, because it excludes balconies and all that stuff and nothing that's covered and that is all understood. Uh, this is, I think this is, might be a little bit different. Uh, and if there isn't anything else, then it's the the provision that Laura just cited.
What's that provision provision again?
It's it's just the definition area comma building.
Area.
Under under B, under definitions.
Yeah, what's the, uh, what do you have that is a section of and whatnot?
Definition per section.
The definitions.
Yeah, definition section, got it.
At the main grade level. Second story is not a main grade level.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but but this is just this, this, I, you know. That this is just one definition.
Well, it's definitely the definition that applies in considerations of lot coverage. Uh, because if you go to go down to the definition of, um. Where was that? Of coverage, the word coverage is that percentage of the plot or lot area covered by the building area. So the word building area means at the main grade level. So when we're, when we're talking about lot coverage, we only consider the footprint at the grade level. Which means. Lot coverage does not change under this application. It remains the same.
The existing garage that I'm showing on S T one. Dimensions.
So that's interesting. Um, i- if in fact we find that, um, setback measurements are taken. At grade level as well, then it means nothing changes under this. And if we further confirm that the addition is in fact a half story, as it seems to be, then nothing changes under the application. And, um, and the, and no zoning variance would be required if if all those are true. So we just have to get a a. Better understanding of how we measure setbacks. From what portion of the building do we measure?
Yeah, well, we can go all over this, uh, you know, Eric, um, we don't necessarily have to resolve that all right here, right now. We can look, we can look all this stuff up.
Alright, so, um. Can, um, Roger, can you send, um, me, email me these. Um, these new plans, um, or an elevation or dimensions that you showed us?
Okay.
The floor plans and the interior dimensions and then I'll distribute them to the board.
You got it.
Yeah, with with calculations, Eric, for how the, how the half story space is determined.
Yes, um, Roger, just give us the math to support your argument that this is a half story and not a, not a full story.
Okay.
And thanks for your work on this, Roger.
Thank you so much.
And then we'll, uh, we'll leave the hearing open.
I have another question, um, just before we move on. And I'm sorry if this was covered already, but we had discussed the question of whether this would need to be rebuilt or whether it was. Uh, a kind of a restoration, um, and and the question of whether that. Um, mattered to our evaluation, so.
Yeah, that was, we talked about that at the workshop, um, when, when the, uh, when we learned that the. The existing garage, the first story would be repaired to some extent. And, um. Tonya subsequently informed us that the the repair of of. Of rotted material would amount to about twenty-five percent of the building. Um, I believe that that work falls under that, um. The section of code that we talked about at the start in regard to eight Temple Avenue, which says that, uh, a preexisting. Repairs can be performed on a preexisting, nonconforming building without variant, a variance, as long as the repairs do not. Increase nonconformity or add new nonconformity and as long as they are not so expensive that they pass certain thresholds. Which are very high. So I I think this clearly, so these repairs to the first story, and I ran this by John first as well and he agreed, are. Uh, do not require any oversight or don't require any review by the ZBA, the repairs to the first story. They're covered by that, the 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 freedom of the owner to to make repairs to a preexisting, nonconforming building.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Eric, let let me ask you that, uh, the fact that the building is proposed to go up a half story. Uh, that still does have, I imagine, impacts for variance requests with regards to the the side yards and the rear yard?
If, um.
Because, go ahead.
Well, um. Only if the setback measurements have changed, only if this, um, this alteration. Increases the nonconformity, the current nonconformity. And that's what we we need to look into that. That depends on where we measure.
Exactly.
What part of the building we measure from. If we're measuring at grade level, then it does not affect the setbacks. And it would seem that the ZBA has no need to review this plan at all in that case, but that that remains to be confirmed.
See, my point is this, Eric, uh, you know, the building was built within, you know, a foot or so of the west boundary. And. It's only of a certain height. And it's going to be increased, you know, from in around eight feet or thereabouts to like thirteen feet, you know, at the support of the roof level. And increasing the volume. You know, would seem to have an impact and warrant a variance. I, we we used to grant variances in these cases. Because the structure was being changed and it was right, you know, near the setback, right on the line, no less, or near the line.
I don't. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you you go ahead, it's.
I was just gonna say, it's it's all a matter of definitions and numbers. Um, we can't, we can't insist that somebody. Um, make an application if they don't have to under the code. So it's just a matter of whether what they're doing. Um, triggers, uh, triggers the need to get a variance. And.
But again, my point is, is, uh. It's it's within a setback, that's the point. And the setbacks were designed to sort of, uh, to be mon. And the setbacks were designed to sort of to be monitored. It's why the code came in.
Right.
And when you're changing the volume of a building.
Well, we we just have to go by the language of the code and if you look at 134-19H, which is that that same section I I mentioned at the start, it says a nonconforming building may be structurally altered, provided that such action does not increase the degree or create any new nonconformity. So they, any owner has a right to so as long as they, as long as their project fits within that language, no matter how bulky it appears to be, they have a right to do it. Any owner does.
All right, well, I'm, you know, I I agree, I I would abide by the code language, so. You know, I mean, that's why I was just gonna look at the code myself. But you've apparently found one provision that sounds pretty direct. So I'm willing to sit with that for now unless I find anything different. But but you're right. I mean, the only thing that dictates however we decide matters is by just looking at the code. That's the only thing we're really guided by.
Yeah.
Tanya, did you have a question or a point earlier?
Oh, it was just, I was going to let Eric know that I sent some photographs that I had taken before this process of the garages on my street and within a half block because there are several that are two-story garages and they weren't always, and I just thought you know, it was just sort of a reference of the accessory structures surrounding my potential accessory with an addition.
Okay, thank, thank you. I will share those with board members and that will be relevant if we proceed to discussing a variance. Because that would qualify, tho- those would be relevant to the question of community character. Does this project? How does this project relate to the community character?
And we would also perhaps take a look at when those structures were built and that would be important.
Right. I mean, one of them that is diagonally across this, well, two across the street. I think we're probably added on to just briefly before I moved here. I don't know the exact year. I moved here in 2000, in this house in 2012. So it must have been just before that. But I had actually taken those photos for historic review, you know, as a point of reference. I didn't know that it would pertain to mine because we had come up with a design that was not a full second story. It was just more to show what people have done with their second story or, you know, the upper part of their garages. But I, you know, looking at them going, well, like nine out of 10 of them are actually full stories or at least significant half stories.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we would have to just try to figure that out. Again, as Eric says, we're just abiding by the code really, so.
Right.
And he he wanted the element, community character and so on and so forth. But if they pre-existed the code, we couldn't we couldn't really be guided by that other than to look at the what the rest of the neighborhood looks like and then try to figure out what does the code want us? What what where's the code telling us to go with how they want the community character going forward? And that's how the code is written. So again, it thanks for that information. We'll look that up.
Do the other board members have anything to add? No.
Not at this time.
All right, well, let's suspend the hearing on this application. We'll continue it at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. And meanwhile, Roger will send me the things we talked about. And I'll pass them on to the board and have Jeff post them for post the new drawings.
If there's anything missing from the drawing that I'm going to send you, just, you know, reply back and we'll just get everything that you'd like to see on there, just so you're satisfied before the hearing?
Yes, will do.
And we'll work back and forth. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tanya and Roger.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the final agenda item, which is minutes for the last meeting, January 21st. Michael updated his first draft and added the resolutions. Shall we take a moment to to go over the to read the minutes and then we'll talk about them?
Sure, I looked them over.
They're pretty short if you exclude the the text of the resolutions.
Eric, I was gonna ask you, did those resolutions get sent out already?
Yes, they were sent to the applicant.
Okay.
Because I'm sorry, I just I cut and pasted the resolution, so they should be exactly
Great.
What you composed.
Yeah, this is a little bit of an afterthought, Eric, on my part, but you know, I kept having a little bit of trouble with the screening issue. And I know we threw in a lot of other stuff around it with regards to the size of lots and the plantings couldn't really go there and it was only the portion and not visible from the road and da da da. But I was thinking another good aspect of that would be the fact that that porch was right on the property line. And that's why screening in this case might have been more welcomed. It was just that proximity of the the porch. And and you know, where you have different situations, as much as the property, the properties were huge. In this case, this building that we were talking about, the the guest house was right on the property, right on the property line.
Right.
Personally sought to have that added in just to be another basics, but I yeah, I say that to the board now while it's fresh in my mind and some of this is fresh in our minds. That we sort of keep that in mind as how that was different situation. If if anything comes up forward, anyway. I had no personal, any problems with the rest of the minutes at all. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that I thought they're great. I just saw a typo. Under Dr. N explained the project noting that not their bullet, just reuse of building materials instead of reused of building materials.
Right.
So it reads correctly.
I wanted to suggest going down from that under board discussion. The third bullet point. Should an existing nonconforming building being completely rebuilt inherit any grandfathered exemptions? I guess we did refer to completely rebuilt, but maybe, but only in passing. I think our primary focus was on partial rebuilding because there is no building being completely rebuilt here in this application. So that was not a a primary concern. We were more wondering about what happens when it's partially rebuilt, like 10%, 20%, 80%. At what point does it in, does it stop inheriting? I see, I I to me, that was the the real core of the of this question. So I would suggest replacing completely with partly.
Yes, and Eric, while we're on that issue, can you tell me what section, did you say 134-198? Is that what you referred to before?
H, H as in Harry, 134, yeah, 19H.
Okay.
And then further on in that same point, I would delete the sentence reading, all current code provisions would apply at any variances considered. I'm not sure what that means. It just is kind of self-evident. Should an existing nonconforming building being partly rebuilt inherit any grandfathered exemptions? Natural, doesn't make sense.
I agree with you.
Say all current code provisions would apply.
So just strike that sentence.
We were just kind of, in in this part of the discussion, we were just kind of like throwing out kind of hypothetical questions with that had no basis. Because we were just trying to educate ourselves on on what the rules were. So I I don't think the minutes should reflect too much of that.
I agree. This goes right back to our point, Erica, where we were talking about when you increase the volume of the building without increasing the footprint. Does that call into question the multiple variances that may be at issue, you know?
Right.
And you're saying, and you're saying by reading 113, 134, 19H, that that is not the case, so.
Any other changes here?
No.
So I I move to approve the minutes of January 1, 2021, as amended pursuant to Eric's points and Laura's correction.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone have new business?
No, one thing I was gonna ask. I think it's really important in the future that, you know, I'm not an architect. And I really have to look at the numbers in order to figure it out and and they have to really write them out for us, you know? Otherwise, I'm going to take this to somebody who I know is an architect to look at it. And say, is this in fact meeting this definition of the code?
That's not our responsibility. It should be presented. I like but it pretty simple, pretty simple expectation.
Laura, you're absolutely right. And and I I don't think it was done here.
That was, yes.
Yeah.
And and any sort of responding as if, well, duh, this is how it's done.
I don't have a lot of patience for that.
Yeah.
It would be, it is a, it's a really important part of the application, right? We want to get it right and we want to give the applicant the best evaluation and that's how to do it is to have it in writing all clear. We're all looking at the same thing. We're not doing calculations ourselves on different pads of paper. So I I thank you, John and Eric, for getting agreement.
Laura, you shined the test as well, so we thank you. I mean, it we're all thinking alike, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I'm glad glad to see it. I appreciate it.
Man, we're all thinking alike. Now, before, where is that half story definition?
In the front of the code chapter of Article Two, which is the definitions.
Article Two definitions, got it.
If you, it's like story comma half and story comma, then there are a few different story definitions all.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to an architect anyway, just to get some understanding. You know, because we we do get this in the past and I always relied on our architect who's on the board to do this for me.
Oh, you mean Donald McDonald?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's an architect, so I put my mind to figuring out what the half story was. Did it meet this code? And and Donald would just say, this is the way it is. And we would get those numbers typed out. They did, they did. They always came in with the numbers and with the calculations, but Donald knew. So now we don't have that architect, so I'm not, I'm not worrying about saying, well, I don't understand. I I'm not an expert in this. But now I will become more familiar, but go ahead.
If you, John, if you want to sponsor me, I'll go to school.
Oh, man.
I was thrown off with the the moment that it didn't feel like there was a great deal of transparency with the first floor height in comparison to the second. So that's where, you know, I just, it just would help to have it fully baked and and in front of us, so, agreed.
Well, don't, nobody should, board members should never feel shy about calling an applicant to account if you feel like that that adequate preparations have not been made. It's perfectly fair to stop, back up and say you're responsible for giving us X, Y and Z. You've only given us X. And just to be clear.
Yeah.
And I was gonna think that we should also, you know, and Laura, you picked up a section on the buildings and and where it's measured from. But I'm still bothered by the fact that this building on top part is bulking out. I mean, what if, you you remember how the old log cabins or the old, the old That's it. They'll go out three feet on the side.
Yeah.
And if that doesn't over a property line.
We just need to some objective, we need to find the, it's gotta be covered somewhere. We just need an objective in writing to support, so we we can be exact about, you know, how far is it to that rear property line or the side property line? We just need the imprint telling us how to make that measurement. Is it from the the bottom, the top, you know, where?
I I agree. I I would personally think logically, it would be from the building straight line facade. You know, and that's what I'm thinking, but apparently from that one definition, we're not getting that right. But then they don't buildings like, like you're saying. They used to do it in 1960s when they did those Jetsons type thing where you're walking through a cone underneath and you come up to this big broad, you know, cylindrical like saucer like living space.
That's 1% lot coverage.
Yeah, no, it's it's true. If this is the case, then it could be really taken for granted or taken advantage of. So we want to exploit it, yeah.
So I'm saying, see, what we do in the law, we often think well, you know, you you're not just dealing with your facts, but what if something else happens in the future and you're coming out with this kind of decision? How is it going to impact other possibilities? And that's why I'm thinking of this, so I I but we are, Eric, you're absolutely right. We are governed by the code. So if we can't find it in here, you know, we can't make it up. Anyway, I've I've delayed us long enough. Go, I can't wait to get my Jetsons project.
All right, if there's no other business, I move that we close the meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, wait, are we meeting again? Did you pick that?
You, right, all right, good point. There actually, I I'm not aware of any biz other business, although I'm sure something will come in, or most likely it will, but is everyone okay? I mean, we told Tanya that we would have the meeting in two weeks, so. Is that a problem for anyone?
No.
All right.
Yeah.
So.
Adjourned.
Okay. Have a great night, everybody.